Okay, we are going live on to Facebook. And we should be live. I think we can go ahead and get the meeting started. Actually, one thing, whoa. All right, I will go ahead and call to order the regular, the virtual city council meeting for June 1st, 2020. Councilmember Vapurzam will not be able to attend as he's recovering from shoulder surgery. And so with that, I will be leading us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you in a time of need, in a time of uncertainty and crisis as we face the unknown and injustices. Lord, please help us to dwell upon whatever is true, whatever is noble, whatever is right, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is admirable, and everything that is excellent and praiseworthy so that we may have your peace with us. We ask that you protect those who protect others, the men and women who serve as doctors, nurses, police officers, firefighters, first responders, and those that served in the armed forces, and so many others that serve their community as servants. Lord, please guide us through these troubled times, grant the city council and our leaders across the state and nation, the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to face and overcome the hurdles before us. In Jesus' name, we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I don't have any scheduled special guests or end announcements. Though a special welcome to everyone who's watching on Facebook, it looks like we have 16, 41 folks watching right now. Gluttons for punishment, thank you for watching. As far as public comment, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment cards on non-agenda items?
No, sir, we do not. We have one comment on an agenda item.
Outstanding, and we will get to that later, but before we do, let's discuss the approval of minutes for the May 18th regular meeting. Y'all should have received, there was one set of minutes that were in the city council packet. There was, there was two additional updates that were sent. The most recent one was sent this morning, and what we were trying to do is just make sure that the record is absolutely as accurate as possible. So hopefully everyone has had a chance to review the minutes that were sent out today. And I'll go ahead and open this up for any discussion or debate on those minutes.
Can I make a motion that we approve the, except the minutes of last meeting?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. When it comes time to vote, please make sure that you are unmuted, and all those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. The next order of business will be the financial report, so I will go ahead and move Ms. Vega in here. Ms. Vega, you should be free to talk now that I've got you unmuted. How are you doing?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, but you can't see my presentation.
And you share the screen? There we go, we can see it.
Okay, good. All right, so these are the April financials that we're going over. Okay, this is the fund balance for the various funds. The capital improvement is flat to budget. Police and Fire. There have been no transfers from the Police and Fire Fund into the General Fund. The Sanitation Fund is 19% over budget, the Street Fund is 93% of budget, and the General Fund is 91% of budget. Our reserves are 2.1 million more than the ordinance 438 requirement, which is 29, 1 point, it's 2.94 million dollars. Okay, the General Fund is up 8% over prior year, which is $307,000 over prior year. The revenue, the street revenue is up 8%, or $40,000 over prior year. Sanitation is flat to prior year. And Police and Fire is 23% over, over prior year. So we've been watching our sales tax to make sure that we're gonna at least meet budget, and right now the projected through May, we are expected, we are projected to exceed budget, and that includes the repayment of the rebates and audits.
It's good.
The General Fund expenses are up 10% or $420,000, I mean $412,000, and this is due to personnel benefits and the bond refunding. Street Fund expenditures are up 8% or $19,000 over prior year. Sanitation is up 2% or $7,000 over prior year. That's it.
Is the, I'll go ahead and open this for discussion if you could. There we go. Is there any council member questions, comments, concerns? Or discussion? Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, I was, I was looking at the General Fund statement of, that's in the pack. Budget for revenue shows about 6,600,000, and actual as of 4/30 is just a little over 4 million, that's about 2,500,000 difference, and I just wanted to check, make sure, I know some of that has to do with the grant having not come in yet, but is there anything in there that we're worried about?
Not at this time.
What, I'm sorry, what page or what were you referring to?
I was, I was looking at the page for the General Fund Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes, and I was looking at budget on revenues was about 6,600,000, and, and actual here at the end of April is just a little over 4 million, so it's about 2,500,000 difference just on the revenue. And I know that there's a million there that looks like hadn't come in on the federal grants yet, so.
Well, it's that, and the other thing is County Milage came in, it hits heavy in May and October, and we got, I don't know the exact number, but you know, it's, I think it was like $2 million that we got. Well, it couldn't be 2 million, could it? No. We received our money in May for Milage, County Milage.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's, if there's, Councilmember Mosley?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
Member Gardner.
Okay.
I apologize. Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I think this was mentioned before, Mr. Mayor, or Ms. Vega, when do we plan on doing those transfers from the Police and Fire into the General Fund? I thought I'd remembered that was going to be quarterly, but it, maybe it wasn't. I couldn't remember what the timing was when we were going to make those transfers.
And I have not received approval to move any of that money over.
Is that something, Mr. Mayor, that the council needs to authorize, or is that something that you have the ability to do?
That is something that finance just moves over.
Okay.
I'll, I'll move it over on the May financials.
I mean, at least that was my understanding. Am I, am I misunderstanding that, Ms. Vega?
I thought that you were gonna notify me when you wanted to change, wanted to move it over. I would recommend moving it quarterly, and I can make sure that that's done every quarter.
Yeah, I believe it was, yeah, it's supposed to be quarterly is what I had thought you said.
Okay, and one other thing, on the next to last page of the financials, or actually the last page of the financials, it shows the budget resolutions that have been passed. I know we passed one for the General Fund budget and one for sanitation, and those are, those are left blank on this report.
Yes, sir, I just got the signed resolutions from Amanda, and they will be on the next report.
Thank you. Was there any additional discussion? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to accept the April financials.
So moved.
Got a motion and second, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, the next order of business, sorry, as I'm trying to administer the Zoom meeting and the meeting itself, will be a planning commission report from the last planning commission meeting, which was Councilmember Mosley.
Yes, sir. The planning department was pretty busy this last month. They had six items on their agenda. About three or four of those items were fairly routine. There was a commercial lot combination just in the extra territorial area outside North Mammell. There were two lot replats in OSH Hills to basically combine two slots, two lots in each instance to make those more accessible and that sort of thing in that hilly terrain. Then we had, let's see, the planning commission is also, they voted to go ahead and send that proposed amendment that we sent to them that would allow the mayor to initiate planning amendments to Sections 94 of the code and that sort of thing that involved planning. They approved that, and that'll be coming back to us, I think, at the next meeting for approval. Another important thing they did is we've gotten a request that one lot that we rezoned about a month ago to C3 up there by the ballparks. They made a mistake. They really wanted C2 zoning because they wanted to build a convenience store filling station, which takes C2. So they applied to the planning commission to go ahead and rezone it to C2 from C3, and they had to get a variance to allow that to be done because usually you can't come back within a year. And the planning commission approved that. They said that that was a good enough cause. And then they went ahead and passed, passed the rezoning unanimously to allow them to go to C2. So we'll probably be getting a service station there at that corner at some point. The other, other item was, interesting item, it was a gentleman in, I think it was Diamond Point, had asked for a variance on a, he had built a storage shed or was in the process of building it, and had laid some concrete over a sewer line, and also laid it too close to the fence, and he was asking for a variance to allow him to go ahead and do that. And they did deny that by 6 to 1, and from what I understand, if he wants to appeal that further, he has to go to the, I think, the county circuit court. So anyway, that's, that's my report, and hopefully I'm not in error on anything, but we should have two, two of those items will be coming to us probably in the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosley, for a very thorough planning commission report. The next order of business is a procedural motion. I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only.
So moved.
We've got a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, before you vote, please make sure you unmute yourself. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. The next, moving on to the next order of business is unfinished business. The first item we have here is the third reading of Ordinance 1001, amending the Mammell Land Use Plan. Before we begin reading that, I received a request from the applicant today requesting to defer this matter until the next city council meeting so that they can, they're gonna take another, make another attempt to sit down and discuss with the country club's board and see if they can't work out something that satisfies everyone, and so they wanted that, that one more opportunity to go meet with them. I told them that I'd pass that on to y'all, and if that was something you wanted, we could entertain a motion to table this until the June 15th. I had a motion and a second. We will go, is there any discussion on that to table this? Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, what was, was the country club in favor of tabling it for a couple of weeks also, or was it just the applicant?
I haven't spoke to the country club or any members of the public. It was just a request from the applicant.
Okay, I mean, if, if the, if both parties were wanting to visit about it, I would, you know, I wouldn't have any objection to that. I don't, otherwise, plenty of time to talk, I don't know.
Got you. Well, just so we're clear, there's, there's really only, and maybe the city attorney can correct me if I make a mistake. There's only one party here that's applying for the zoning, which is the applicant, and so there's the applicant and then everyone else, right? And, and one of those, everyone else includes residents and is of course the Mammell Country Club, which is why I didn't run it past them or post notice online that they were wanting to request, and then that is ultimately, this does sit with the city council. I conferred with the city attorney, and we think that is a decision for the council to make. Madam City Attorney?
I agree. I don't know that there are any requirements that anybody be notified as far as a motion to table, but that is entirely the council's decision. Whether you want to go ahead and move forward with a vote, or whether you want to table it and consider it in two weeks instead.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
I don't understand why we would have a vote if the applicant is asked to to table it and to defer it, I guess. There, there would be no reason to care, to, to move forward with this until we have an applicant.
Well, I believe we do still have an applicant. They, it's not that they are withdrawing their request entirely. They just want some time in between the vote. So I mean, the, the process has already been started, and they did have, they could have deferred before, you know, the planning commission's vote. They could have done that at that time, but since we've already had two readings on this particular ordinance, it would be, at this point, the council's decision on whether to continue or to table it.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After visiting with Mr. Bingham, who is the broker for the applicant, I advised him that after, listen, we spent an hour and a half together, but I advised him that the kindest thing that I would be able to offer would be indeed to table this until both parties have an opportunity to go back and discuss further, because I didn't feel like that they had had sufficient time or effort to negotiate. So I am very much in favor of making a motion to table it.
I think I saw, thank you, Councilmember Holt. I think I saw Councilmember Scott. Did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I heard from a couple of residents who are in fear of delaying this because they had just found out about it. So they wanted an opportunity to, you know, talk among themselves, discuss pros and cons, that kind of thing. So the few people that I talked about it are in favor of deferring it as well.
Councilmember Tierney? I believe you're muted. Hang on, let me unmute you. I've got you taken care of, I believe. You're, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Oh, good. I feel like I'm in a commercial for cell phones. I've had a lot of people write me about this and explain to them a lot of things that they were not aware of as far as all the repercussions and the things that are going on. And since then, I've also had a lot of people writing me and calling me, telling me they wanted to reverse the earlier suggestion. So there's still a lot of learning going out there in the community about exactly what all this entails. I think the delay would be a good idea.
Got you. Is there any further discussion on the, Councilmember Scott?
There is just one other thing. Some people who have contacted me have misinformation. They feel that, they thought the property was owned by the city, and therefore the residents of the town, and that they would then have a right to weigh in on, you know, the property, and, you know, explains to them not city property. It has not been city property, that prior to CAW owning it, it was on my Mammell Water Management. Some people weren't clear on the easement being a private easement and not being a city easement. So there's a lot of education, I think, that could be made available to the public so they have at least a true understanding of all the elements of it instead of speculation and misinformation.
Thank you. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Just my two cents, I'm very much in favor of postponing this vote because I want to give every opportunity, I don't care if it's for the next three meetings that we delay it, but I want everybody to have opportunity to go through discovery and maybe work out any problems that they have. So I'm very much in favor of delaying it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any further discussion on the motion to table Ordinance 1001 until the June 15th city council meeting? Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I would just say I'm kind of on the fence. I, I don't know what new information, but I guess, I guess it wouldn't hurt if, if they can get together. I guess, I guess that would be okay, but I hate to deviate from our, our our normal procedures, but I'll probably go along with this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Last call, final discussion on the motion to table Ordinance 1001 until June 15th council meeting. Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Motion pass, 7 to 1.
Thank you. We will move on to the third reading of Ordinance 1002, amending Mammell zoning map. Same thing, I'd entertain a motion to table this.
Make a motion to table.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
The motion passes 7 to 1.
Thank you. That'll move us right along to Ordinance 1007, providing retirement benefits for the city attorney. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Yes, sir. I do want to point out that we did have a public comment regarding those two ordinances that were cabled.
Okay. Let's, let's hear it.
Okay. Once again, I am Gip Carpenter. I live at 222 Mountain Terrace Circle, and I am representing Mammell Country Club. Since this will be my final installment, I will be brief. At this point, I would know, I would not further address the misinformation that has been presented to the council or social media, except to say that there is a difference in an access easement and a street right-of-way. Simply put, Madam City Attorney has explained the city code regarding rezoning from open space surrounding property, which is entirely Mammell Country Club, is now in its 51st year, and there have not been any substantial changes to our property in that time. Finally, most importantly, we are the only adjacent or adjoining property to the subject properly, property, and we firmly, adamantly, and positively oppose the change in the property use designation or rezoning of the property to residential use.
I'm, I'm sorry, we didn't have that back when we were having that discussion. I would have probably voted no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, did you say there were any other public comments for any other?
No, sir, that concludes our public comments.
Thank you. And I believe we were on the reading of Ordinance 1007?
Yes, sir. Be it enacted by the city council, the city of Mammell, county of Plaski, state of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 1007, and ordinance providing for the retirement benefits in accordance with Section 24-12-120 of the Arkansas Code for the elected position of the city attorney of the city of Mammell and for other purposes.
Motion to approve Ordinance 1007?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second on that. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes, ordinance 1007 is adopted. Which brings us to new business. The first item of new business is resolution 2020 dash 13. Expressing a willingness to participate in the tax back program. Madam City Clerk, if you could read that by title only, please.
A resolution of the city council, the city of Maumell, county of Plaski, state of Arkansas. A resolution to be entitled resolution number 2020 dash 13. A resolution of the city of Maumell certifying local government endorsements of businesses to participate in a tax back program. As authorized by section 15 dash 4 dash 2706 of the Consolidated Incentive Act of 2003.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So I have brought our Director of Community and Economic Development, Ms. Judy Keller, in here to talk about this program, which I think is. It's always nice to see businesses and industry here in Maumell expanding. But perhaps you can tell us a little bit more, Ms. Keller?
I'd be happy to. Thank you for the opportunity to do that. Many of you may already know that Cypress Cold Storage was before the planning commission in April. And they had a revised site plan, a revised landscape plan, and a revised commercial design plan, and those all passed. Just a little background, Frostier broke ground in 2003. And they were purchased last year and became Cypress Cold Storage just barely a year ago. The great news is that when they bought the the land in 2003 and broke ground, they had plans to expand within the next few years. And with the economy going up and down, they have not done that. Cypress Cold Storage is investing nearly $13 million. They have two other facilities that they could have chosen to expand. We're very pleased that they chose to expand here. With the employment, unemployment rate at over 10% in Arkansas. They will be creating 16 new jobs with a half a million dollar annual payroll. And I'm trying to think if I've left anything out that's important for you to know. We're really pleased that they are growing when so many other businesses during this pandemic are not doing well. So they're. We're just pleased that they're before us with this request, and this is one of the incentives that they qualify for. But it also requires the city to pass this resolution. Do you have any questions?
Ms. Keller, and I believe we also have the CEO, Michael McAfee, is it? I believe he's on, if there are any questions, but you'll probably find that Ms. Keller is probably the best person to. Answer any questions. So I'll go ahead and open up resolution 2020 dash 13 for discussion. Councilmember Williams?
I just have a quick comment. This company has been very, very good. To our people here at City of Faith, they've been a very good community. Partner with us. And I am going to echo what Ms. Keller said, that it could have chosen anywhere to expand, but they chose here, and I, for one, am very, very tickled with it. So. Thank you, Cold Storage, Mr. McAfee, and Judy, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. If there is no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion to approve resolution 2020 dash 13. We have a motion. Did I hear a second? A motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please make sure you're unmuted and vote yes.
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 All opposed, please make sure you're also unmuted and vote no. Motion carries. Resolution 2020 dash 13 is adopted. Thank you, Ms. Keller and Mr. McAfee for attending. The next order of business is resolution 2020 dash 14, amending the 2020 general fund budget. Madam City Clerk, treasure, if you could please read that by title only.
Resolution of the city council of the city of Maumell, county of Plaski, state of Arkansas. Resolution number 2020 dash 14, a resolution to amend the 2020 general fund budget.
Yes, so. I'll start off with this. What this is, is a request for additional monies. As y'all know, the. We are trying to hire a new finance director. And also what you may not know is our, the city hall receptionist works for and under the finance department, and so. Our current receptionist is out of the office for about a month. And what we'd like to do is hire someone for that position. And so that we can take the bookkeeper that's currently serving as receptionist and get them back working on the books. So that's part of this money. Part of this money would be for an increase in salary. Of, we're proposing about $7,500 more than it currently offers, and we're hoping that'll allow us to attract and land a. Candidate that can help us dig ourselves out of. A little bit of a problem. I attached a few documents regarding the audit. I had a good. Phone conference today with our auditors and Ms. Vega. And the city clerk to go over a timeline to try and. Figure out exactly what needs to be done and how we can get the audit completed. The auditors have been in touch with the Office of Arkansas Legislative Audit today to see what we need to do to be able to meet some of their timelines. We're hopeful that we can go ahead and get that. In advance, or we're hoping we can get that handled. And of course, one thing I didn't mention, some of that money goes to the fact, what we'd like to do is keep the current finance director on board. For a while while we bring in the the new finance director. And so even if they were at the same salary, that overlap creates some budget issues. I think 25 is going to be on the high end, but that does allow in case someone comes in and. Ops for some of the options, you know. Personnel related, whether it's family coverage or different. Employment packages that are currently not elected. So. I am, I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. And if there is no discussion, I'd entertain a motion. I, in the meantime, I will. Pardon me?
I move that we approve resolution 2020 dash 14.
I think there was a couple of. Discussion, yeah.
A motion, but no second, so we'll come back to that. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I was wanting to ask, the legislative audit said something about for valid coverage under the Arkansas. Self insured fidelity bond program, the audit should be completed within 18 months. And it doesn't look like we'll get it done probably by the end of June, I'm guessing. So what does that mean as far as coverage under this? Program?
Not good things. I'll let the city attorney who's been looking into that explain that, although let me back up the. I don't, I do think that we can meet the, well, it's looking like we'll be able to meet the June 30 deadline for what the legislative audit requires. Legislative audit doesn't require the CAFR. It requires a separate report, though a CAFR can, as I understand it, serve as that. So what we're, what we're trying to do is get that initial report in. And then continue working on the CAFR. And if we get that initial report and everything checks out, that should satisfy that. Again, the time. If if we have people really crunching, I've been told that it, that that is not an impossible deadline for us to hit. So that's half of what you're saying. The other half. Is the the doom and gloom story of what happens if we don't. Madam City Attorney?
Okay, so this is all fairly new to me. Just found out about this last night and started researching it today, but. So public officials for cities are required to be bonded, and they're required to ensure that the the employees that work under them that have any responsibility or even potential responsibility for handling funds are also bonded. And there are a number of different statutes that establish that obligation. And then this self insured fidelity. Policy takes care of that obligation. But if we don't satisfy their requirements that we have an audit. In place, we are still under an obligation to have that bond. So the city would have to seek a bond from, you know, another surety. That's authorized to do business in the state of Arkansas. Which would probably be fairly difficult without an audit. I mean, that's going to be a requirement that another surety might have as well. Could run into some significant expense. And it is the public official's responsibility to make sure that happens. So, for example, one. In one case, a sheriff did not post the proper bond within 10 days of being elected, so he was. They vacated the position and put somebody else in his spot. For public officials, it's a very serious responsibility to make sure that we have a fidelity bond in place.
Good, thank you. Had one more question there, as far as the secretary, temporary secretary, or not secretary, but receptionist position. Do we, do we have any surplus employees right now? Say from the senior center, anybody that's that currently is underutilized that could fill that function?
Well, what we're looking to do is hire over someone from Parks and Rec, one of their recades. And bring them in here because it's really about a three year. Four week job is what we're looking at. And so. That was, that was our current plan. But to answer your question, is there someone at the senior center who could come over? I bet they would if we made them, but I haven't discussed that. Anyone over there? Sorry, I was not laughing at your question, Councilmember Mosley.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions related to our bond rating being withdrawn. And this may be for the city attorney to answer, and you may not have the answer, but I know. In a, in the business world, a lot of times if you have issues with your, your company's rating, or if you're downgraded to a certain level. That could cause issues and they could either call the bond due or a note due at that point. Were we in a kind of situation like this where this might affect our city's rating? And would that have any negative implications on us where we may have issues with our interest rate suddenly spiking because we weren't compliant? Do y'all know the answers to that?
So I spoke with Leanne Burnett with Stevens and have quite a bit as we've been working through this. Our hopes was. If you saw the S and P rating getting pulled, what is present, you know, what they say is that we haven't turned over information that they've requested. And so we were hoping that by submitting a report to them with all the pertinent information. That that would suffice. And so myself, Ms. Vega, and Ms. Burnett with Stevens worked pretty hard to to put together a report to give them. On our financial situation. That report didn't suffice. They want the audit. And so they have, they have pulled that credit rating. What the implications that have been told to me of that are is that there are certain entities that must or can only hold rated bonds. And so. When we lose our rating. Motion censored lights, bad idea. Who designed City Hall, whatever. When we lose our. Credit rate or that rating, there are certain bondholders, and we know of one that had to actually sell their bonds. We anticipate being able to. Get this retroactively added back, the rating, so that they can retroactively add it. I was told that if that happens fairly promptly. It doesn't hurt our reputation, but there might be, the next time we go to sell bonds, there might be someone who remembers, hey, I have to have rated bonds, and I remember this entity had the rating. And then that rating was removed and then added back and caused them to sell their bonds. So it's a factor that that could affect us the next time that we go out. To. To bond, which hopefully is not anytime soon.
Okay.
And so that was the implications that were relayed to me about that.
At the, I believe it was in the fall of last year, we authorized a new accountant position. I believe, I don't believe we increased headcount. We just basically upgraded a position to an accountant. Is that correct?
No, we actually increased a staff member. We've added.
Okay, okay. Has that helped improve the workload? It just seems like the audit has been the broken record that we've been hearing about for many years, and I don't remember. We're doing the 2018 audit now. Do you recall when the 2017 audit was completed and submitted? Was it more than 18 months late, or was it submitted prior to?
It was less. We got that completed last, I want to say April, and we might have brought it. I think it was approved or accepted by the council in April. And so we were looking at that. And so just a little bit of background. For the council members that haven't been around that long, and then maybe for any of the. Folks that are watching, we fell behind in audits. A number of years ago, long enough that we can't really use it as an excuse anymore. And it had to do with personnel changes and vacancies, coinciding between the Department of Finance, Human Resources. We got in. You know, the the stuff that went on with the former city clerk treasurer, and they all kind of culminated in a perfect storm. That caused us to get behind. And. It looked like this time last year, it looked like we were caught up with audits. We'd be running a few late, few months behind for the 2018 audit. And then it just as, as time went on, it became apparent that the bank accounts hadn't been reconciled for all of 18, and so they were having to go back and do that. They've made significant progress, as I understand it. But. We're not there yet, and. You know, it's, it's, it's one of the reasons why I'm here asking for. Additional money so that we can sort of double up a certain timeframe, maybe. Attract other candidates to the vacancy and. Yeah, and and that's why we're here asking for more. Resources to try and get this under control because this isn't acceptable, you know. And not being an accountant myself, I've communicated a whole lot with our auditors and other folks to try and figure out how we can. Dig ourselves out of this hole, and I, I thought we were, and then it turns out that we weren't.
Well, and then money aside, I mean, I, I think I understand what you're asking for in terms of to be able to offer a better compensation for the position to attract candidates. You know, I just, I, I just wonder when we're going to be caught up. I mean, I, it sounds like you've kind of got a timeline of when this might. Be done, and I'm hopeful that we can get it done by the end of June. But are you confident that the reconciliations are to a point where they can finish out 2018 and get the audit finished up?
No.
Okay.
I'm not. And that isn't because I've seen something that indicates otherwise. It is that. At basically this time last year, it was my understanding that we were a month or two away from the audit for 2018, you know, and so we are. What, 10, 10 months past the time that I thought it would be there? I, I, I'm, I'm. I understand that it's been told to me that the audit will, that the rank conciliations will be done. By next Monday, but I've heard similar timelines in the past that we've, we've failed to meet. And. So, so no, I'm not confident. I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful that we can attract a quality candidate, have a period of time where you've got that new individual. As well as the current finance director at a time where we're not pulling personnel out of that department to. To man the, or to staff the the receptionist desk. And so that's my goal.
Thank you for your honesty. I know that's, I know it's a difficult position, and I appreciate you being so frank about the situation that we're in, and hopefully we'll get out of it soon.
Yeah. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, I, I echo. Uh, yes, I I I echo uh a lot of what the uh uh Alderman Gardner is saying. Um, but I also understand this has been a long term problem that was started three years ago and started rolling then. And uh it's you, uh, I I I think we all wish you very well in in getting somebody on board and and turning this this train around that has not been running well for three years. And uh uh I do not, I do not place any blame on you. You have not been there long enough to get a handle on it. Uh, but uh, we are seeing signs that everybody else is noticing. We've we've got problems getting an audit done. So um, we we take it seriously, and I want to give you all the resources and the encouragement to make the finance department top priority here for at least June. And uh, we need to do whatever we need to do to get all this going and back back on track. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So I believe I have a a motion to adopt Resolution 2020 dash 14. Did I get a second yet? Or did we pause? Well, who made the motion?
I did.
Okay, okay. So I have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Councilmember Scott?
Uh, wouldn't do any good to have contract labor in for a short period of time?
We did. We so we had, yeah, maybe. And so we did last year, we brought that accountant staff um temp in, and then we hired someone to that position. I asked that question again today and was told that that you can only have one person working on reconciling an account at one time. And so you can't have two people working on that that one account. It's my understanding, we have just one account remaining um in a few months that this can be knocked out. Yeah, I'm told by Monday. Um, and um so if if what I'm being told is accurate, um, by the time we were to bring in someone, it 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 really wouldn't be overly helpful for the eighteen. What I plan on doing is bringing in um uh a when when we bring in the new department to get a real hard, honest assessment of where we're at and then uh make that determination, because I think we're at about the point in time where um, this has gone on way too long. It if we just need to bring in contract, I mean, if you just have to bring in the the special forces, if you will, and just knock it out that it's time to do that. Um, uh, we've been talking about an audit being behind way too long, and it's, quite frankly, it's embarrassing. On the bright side, um, uh, and I have spoke with some of the 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 new accountant, I've had a chance to pull people aside. Doesn't seem as though there's any um impropriety with the money or everything's there. It's just the way the books are kept makes it so that it's an entire investigation every time you have to reconcile something. And then, of course, being behind um hasn't um helped that. So that's that's a good question uh and and one that we will ask um the the new individual coming in to to make that assessment right at the beginning. And let's get this over with as quick as possible. So we do have a motion in a second to approve Resolution 2020 dash 14. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please make sure you're unmuted and say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, say no. Thank you very much. The next order of business is Resolution 2020 dash 15, amending the 2020 general fund budget. Uh, Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas. A resolution to the entitled Resolution Number 2020 dash 15, a resolution to amend the 2020 general fund budget.
Outstanding. So um um this is a completely unanticipated uh pump failure that occurred at um the pool. Um, you can see I brought in what what appears to be Philip uh Rayburn, but is actually um his uh deputy, second in command Gordon, um, who I'll go ahead and um unmute. Who I'll go ahead and unmute.
Good evening, Mayor.
Evening. Can you, can you go ahead and tell uh uh the council what's uh going on, what broke and um what we need to do to solve it?
Yes, we had a uh pump failure on the features side of the pool. And uh for, or actually, it was on the main side of the pool. Fortunately, our features side of the pool has the same pump. And we were able to transfer it over in order to keep the pool open. Um, we do need to replace this same type pump uh to get our features back up, but also in case there's ever another eventuality with failure, it allows us to have a backup pump.
Thank you. Um, is there any questions uh from the city council? Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yeah, do we not? Uh, the 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 spending budget for parks for the entire year is like 1.8 million dollars. Is there not uh eight eight thousand dollars hiding in there that uh we can spend that money on?
Well, there there would be Councilmember Mosley, but the council has probably very wisely put a lot of constraints on the ability to move money, uh even within uh a big, a larger department like parks, right? So they came in and originally said, oh, well, it looks like we'll be able to hit this with the personnel. And I said, no, no, we can't take the personnel money to use it for me. So so there's plenty of other m- monies in parks or the city that we could use, but this was the pools budget. Uh, and we currently provide $30,000 a year in maintenance, though that this sort of uh um maintenance item was not anticipated uh when it broke.
Okay, so what you're saying is we can't take uh money from uh, say, for example, uh uh Lake Willastine or something like that, or miscellaneous expenses for that and move that in there. Is that what you're saying?
So that's my understanding. For those that don't know, if you've if you've got the budget, you'll recall that that the Parks and Rec Department actually has a lot of different department codes for the different items. And so while the big umbrella of Parks and Rec has that money inside the pool, which is its own department number, didn't have that extra money there. And I didn't go through every line item to see where we could pull that money from, uh, just knowing that it would have to come to the city council.
Okay, thank you.
Mm hmm. Um, was there any other discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve uh Resolution 2020 dash 15. We have a motion and a second. Um, um, any final discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Um, thank you. Then while we're on the pool, I was going to bring this up in um uh mayor's comments, but um, thank you, Mr. Boris, for attending. The pool opened and has been largely successful. I think we've seen that there have that that folks are so eager to get out and about and do things that we've been able to um uh adhere to the governor and the Department of Health's recommendations on how to do that, which was a a bit of a relief. We, you know, when you open something like that, we were just hoping that we didn't um just have, you know, just crowds of people, but it's been pretty um um successful so far. So with that, um, we will go ahead and move on to the city engineer plans for uh the Club Manor in Odom South intersection. Uh, there was discussion, I don't have the city engineer to give a presentation here. There's discussion in the past about uh including this um for y'all to consider. And what I wanted to do uh is just present this to y'all. There should be the, y'all got that big copy of all the different options. Um, there's different ways that this can be done. Um, and and we can progress. Uh, we can either discuss it amongst ourselves or or try to solicit a recommend, a specific recommendation from the city engineer, um, though um um that would probably be better as the byproduct of a workshop or session where the council was able to share their concerns, thoughts, preferences on that um intersection there. So we'd either open it and this up for discussion or uh as it was requested by Councilmember Saunders has now been included in the the council packet um and is now a matter of public record.
I would certainly prefer to wait. I'm, I don't think any of us are traffic experts, and I think this could be, I think this could be a better discussed in a in a forum when we all get back together with the engineer presenting his thoughts. So that'd be my preference.
Me too. It's kind of daunting.
It is, it is.
Yeah, it's it's overwhelming. Yes.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of good information in there, though. Um, Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I I appreciate the, what I call Texas turnarounds, where you you loop around without uh having to go through a stop sign and all that. I think that's uh, those are an interesting approach. So uh, I have a feeling that's pretty, I have a feeling that's a low cost approach, too.
And has been an oft um recommended from some of the experts um solution to it, to that. But if there's no further discussion, we can uh move on. Last call. All right, uh, we'll move on to mayor's comments uh for the COVID-19 update. I mentioned the pool that has been um largely successful. Um, we have um uh currently with the numbers what they are, we're in a little bit of a holding pattern. I have been in contact with um uh Parks and Rec and Philip, and we've come up with a plan on how to open up the playgrounds and keep them sanitized. At this point, I think we're waiting uh uh for a little bit of more stability in the numbers, but we're hopeful that that can happen sooner rather than later. Uh, on Friday, I was down at the um Mammell Center on the lake uh for their lunch session um and volunteered briefly. I think I spent most of the time talking with um uh Nicole Vogler, the Director of Senior Services and uh Fire Chief Gerald DeZell, as we went around and really tried to find a way that we could open up some things but be as safe as possible. It looks like we have our plan for how we will open at first, when that first comes, and I'll give you a heads up. Um, the, one of the goals is to maybe open up the the gym first to no more than two people by reservation. Um, uh, that would provide ample um um maximum control under the guidelines. Uh, that's way more than the minimum social distancing. Uh, but still recognizing that this is a facility that cog uh that recon, that primarily serves um um individuals that fall into the highly vulnerable category. Um, but yet also people who who um want to get out and and exercise and get their muscles going and their joints going and um all of which we want to encourage. And then a a way to open up the cafe to very limited seating on a reservation basis. So those will be the first steps. I don't know that we're quite there yet. Um, Ms. Vogler is preparing a report, but we we do think that that if we do that heavily limited um um opening, that we can do that well in advance of of where we were originally thinking, which is a late phase three uh opening. So um, I'm happy to answer any questions about the city's position on COVID-19, if there are any. Seeing none, um, I did want to point out, we we've been anxiously awaiting the sales tax numbers from March. Um, we got those numbers in uh and they're very favorable. Our percentage of the county sales tax went up marginally from from the same month last year. But the city sales tax went up, I believe it was 56% over um um the March last year. So that is an incredible number. Uh, we, as we've tried to predict uh how the city would be impacted by COVID-19. Uh, those are very favorable numbers. Now, we don't know if that'll carry through the month that was April. Um, perhaps there was a lot of um uh initial purchasing or um, I don't want to say panic buying, but initial hoarding of of uh items that that perhaps um uh we'll see that dip then for the April sales tax for sales that occurred in April. But it also could be indicative of uh the shifting and purchasing to um online and being delivered as opposed to going out of the city and making those purchases. As the council will remember, if you purchase something online and it is delivered to a Mammell address, that sales tax is given to Mammell, not necessarily the the point of origin. Uh, and so I think it's it's very optimistic that 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 big number that we saw of nearly 56% increase also includes the the $40,000 that were being taken out. So that's that's good news, and we hope it continues, although we, I think, all agree that we'd rather COVID-19 just go away. But um
Mr. Mayor, on on that point, I was going to ask you a question. You you just answered that. Uh, so the the 258,000 that we received for the 1% sales tax, that included the subtraction of the 40,000 that they took back for the state.
That's, that's my understanding. What I've, now I haven't looked through the the codes just yet, where they send out the list of codes. But the way it was supposed to work is that money was supposed to be taken out before uh the numbers are given to us. So
Okay.
Um, uh, and I
I wondered if
that was the way it was supposed to. I just haven't, I haven't gone in and seen the itemized list. I've got the letters that were in the the council packet, you know, but I don't have
That's
the N A I, what are they, N A I S codes that should show that rebate.
That's what reminded me to ask that, was getting to the end of the packet. And I I wondered if they would include that as a subtraction on the little report that they give us, but apparently they did not. So
Yeah, I'd say I've been told they show up in that that more detailed uh list that I that I haven't received a copy of that yet.
Thank you.
Um, the other thing that I wanted to bring up is, and I'll continue to do this so long as we meet virtually, and that is when we plan to return to in-person uh council meetings. I think this is very um um, this is a very convenient way, but I've always been concerned that it also doesn't necessarily um lend itself to a whole lot of public participation. Um, um, we we can read those comments, but the ordinance 1,000, you know, limits that. It doesn't allow everyone to just get on and and voice their opinion. And there's some, there's certainly value to having the public come in and and voice their opinions and and see their elected officials face to face. Um, and I've always liked that we do that. On the other hand, um, uh, while we can properly social distance in the new council chambers, the audience, we don't have the capability to social distance properly with the um uh, the council itself, which is not um necessarily a a good thing. If we went back to the community center, which is an option, um, we will have the same sort of acoustic issues that we did. And then we lose a lot. I think there's a lot of translation that's lost when we stream from a phone or from a a portable device out onto Facebook. Um, so I open that up for discussion and see what the council desires to do.
I would just agree that it is very difficult for the public to participate in this forum. But I I do understand the concern that some might have uh to not meet publicly yet. But um it it just, it gets to the point where I miss the public interaction as well. And I want them to be able to have as much opportunity to speak on issues as possible, and this format certainly limits that.
Are there any other thoughts from anyone? Just chime in. No need to raise your hand. So what I have, so okay, Councilmember Holt?
I am certainly looking forward to that event where we can get back to normal. I think each of us are well aware of the precautions that we uh should take and and do take. So I believe that we can have that forum and do so in a safe uh environment. Uh, I go to work three times a week, and I am checked from one end to the other, and we're very close quarters. But um taking those precautions, you can live fairly safely. And I'm, I I agree, we need to put ourselves back in front of the public as much as possible. This is a, you may do with what you've got, but um at the earliest possible moment that we feel safe, I would vote yes to move. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mosley?
Uh, I would just point out that how many, how many folks are watching tonight? Forty-one or at least at the beginning of the meeting?
Looks like there's 29 that have Looks like there's 29 that have soldiered on at this point.
Forty-nine, it's kind of, it kind of fell off. It may have uh, one of the, the, the main subject may not have been addressed, so they all went home. But um, I, I think we are getting turnout. People are tuning into this. Uh, so they're at least watching as long as they know how to participate. I, I don't want to go back to the uh, community center. So I think it's either continue to do what we're doing or, or uh, try the, try the new uh, I, I personally would prefer to do this at least one more, one more time, but uh, I'll, I'll yield to whatever the group wants as far as the majority.
Mr. Mayor, will we have the ability to stream from the new council chambers? Is that ready to go?
We can, yes, we can stream. It looks like we got that confirmed today. And that hasn't been a rushed process on our end because there's not been any meetings uh, being held in there. Um, and we can even, I, I believe, Madam City Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, do a, do a hybrid meeting of sorts, which is where um, individuals can, where, where we could have the bulk of the, the council present, but some folks call in. Those folks that are calling in on, say, a Zoom call, and by folks, I mean uh, the city council members um, wouldn't necessarily be able to see the council. But I would be able to see them, if that makes sense.
And that, that is permitted under our ordinance, as long as we can confirm their identity and hear them, and they can hear us, they can participate that way.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to participate via Zoom under those circumstances, I don't think. So.
Yeah. It, 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 it puts that individual at a little bit of a um, disadvantage, although it, the disadvantage as far as participation, but an advan, advantage as far as safety, right? Um, so um, it, it sounds like everyone's eager to get going, but is there consensus that we go ahead and hold the next uh, city council meeting by Zoom and, and make a determination at that time? Is that where we're at? I see a lot of head nodding. Anyone disagree?
Have you looked at target in uh, what, Jim, the si, or Jim, sorry, July the 6th possibly?
I, yes, well, I think, so we, we would make the determination at the next meeting, but it looks like there's more people in favor of it than there was last time. Um, but then that could put the first meeting back. You're right at the, the first meeting in July. Um, and that concludes Mayor's comments. City Council comments. Councilmember Scott?
I just have a couple of questions. Um, any word on uh, census participation?
Oh, I, I haven't looked at it recently. The mo, last time I checked, Monell was uh, number two in the state as far as the, yeah, number two in the state as far as self-participation. Um, and it looks like number one is, is Bella Vista, and they were pulling away pretty hard. And I don't know that we'll catch them, but out of the 500 cities um, in the state, I think we're pretty happy with number two. And that, that is um, some credit to city staff and we've promoted it, but it's also a testament to the residents and recognizing the importance of the census and just how much that can affect their community's bottom line. So.
Good. And the, and I have is uh, you know, the protective fence along Monell Boulevard, along the trail? There have been sections of that out for some time. Is that our responsibility or the state's?
Yes. Uh, it's, it's one of those that has to be done by both. Um, and I'll follow back up uh, with that, uh, with Mr. Hogan. Got you. Uh, yeah. So also as a reminder, I'd meant to say, well, that's a perfect example. I don't know if folks have used the C Click Fix app yet. Get that thing on your phone. It is, it is heck of fun. Uh, I, I use it and sometimes I post publicly and then sometimes I post anonymously just because I, I, I want to see how quick that gets re, uh, resolved. Um, if they just don't know that it's the mayor asking them to resolve it. Uh, and it's been really interesting and it's a tremendous tool um, for us to keep track of things. And it's so easy to use. You can, you can do it on your phone or you can just hop on the computer and do it. Um, so please continue to use that, C Click Fix. For anyone watching on Facebook, it's, it's right, it's right over there. Uh, you can click a button that says, report a problem. Uh, Councilmember Saunders?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just to be crystal clear, so there's no misunderstanding, are we doing the June 15 meeting by Zoom?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Well, I thought we were. I just wanted to be real clear on it. Okay. That's all.
Any other uh, city council member comments?
Mayor, just wanted to thank you again for your uh, your, your frankness and openness about the finance issues that we've been dealing with. Um, I know that nobody wants to see that resolved more than you. So thank you for asking, you know, answering those questions for us this evening. And, and uh, we, I think you, it's pretty obvious, you've, you've got our back, or we've got your back here, um, that we want to help, you know, do whatever we can to get that stuff resolved for the city.
Thank you. Last chance for council member comments. Seeing none, uh, city attorney comments?
I did want to make mention, um, I think we try to do this each year. My, I have two children who are working for the city. My daughter Grace has been a rec aid. This is her third summer. Um, and she's back doing that. And then my daughter Morgan is a certified lifeguard, so she'll be working at the pool. Um, I did also just want to take a moment uh, and make just a brief comment on things kind of going on with um, the world around us right now and um, share a quote that one of my daughters posted on social media today. And it's this, "You are personally responsible for becoming more ethical than the society you grew up in." And I thought that was so um, just profound in, in the discussion of personal responsibility. And as, you know, as public servants, we're personally responsible to communicate and to open up those lines of communication and facilitate that, to get to know people, to make efforts to dispel fear and anxiety, to um, to treat the way we, you know, as we've spoken of, to treat people fairly and equitably. And um, we're, we're personally responsible to call out others when they don't do that. We have that personal responsibility. Um, I, and I hope that, and I know we are, that we will all be in prayer for our, our, our officers as they do exactly that. I know they seek to build those bridges in the community every single day and to reach out and get to know people and to um, to build those relationships that make such a difference. Um, and I, I see them do that. I watch, you know, videos of them doing that, and I hope that you will remember them as they do that. And I just want to mention that um, you know, I'm a mom, as I just said, and so my heart goes out to the mothers. And I know there are a lot of them who um, both moms of officers and um, and moms of children um, and protesters. And I, I pray that you will know that there will be a day when they don't have that fear and that they will know that we all um, support them and will uh, just feel that and be able to have some peace from that. Uh, and most of all, I just pray that we all keep our hearts free of um, hatred and bitterness and that our communities can find ways to just seek to love our neighbor more every day. Well said, Missy. Thank you.
Yes.
Very well said. Thank you. Mi, Ms. Timmons, uh, your turn to follow that up. Any city clerk comments?
I'm sorry, Missy, did you mention that my kid was working at the community center? Did we?
I did not. I thought I'd let you.
My daughter is aquatic staff this year. As a courtesy, we always like to share that with you guys. So Leila Timmons is also working there. And I want to say um, Attorney Crabs, that was very appropriate, your quote. Um, uh, your daughter, she's very wise to have posted something so poignant. So thank you for sharing. And um, Mayor Norris, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. It looks like uh, um, Councilmember Williams, you are the liaison to the planning commission for June. Good luck. Uh, and we'll see what uh, exciting things are coming in June. Uh, at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion and did I hear a second and a second? Uh, any discussion on that? Didn't think so. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
See y'all.